So, the board is back in open session. I apologize to anyone who may be on the edge of their seats at home waiting, anticipating a 6:30 PM start. We're running a little late. First item on the agenda, Mr. Purple?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the agenda we have is a poll request from Massachusetts Electric, National Grid, installation of underground facilities on Oregon Road. If the board recalls, this matter was submitted probably originally about six weeks ago. And there was an issue at that point with some of the material that was submitted. There was an inconsistency, so that was then corrected. And when it was put back on the schedule, there was no one here from National Grid to speak to it. So, we waited for National Grid to get back and reschedule. And we are here hopefully for the third and final time this evening to address the matter. So, I believe the applicant can speak, the applicant can speak to the application.
Good evening. Thank you for appearing tonight. I can tell you, the board has the information. We've reviewed the information, if not once, twice. So, to the extent you have any additional information to fill in from last time, perhaps we can begin the discussion there.
Okay.
Just tell us who you are first.
Okay. My name is Crystal Tognazi. I'm from the Hope Dale location, National Grid.
Your first name again?
Crystal, C-R-Y, S-T-A-L.
Yep.
So, last time I was present at the meeting, it was in question as to whether or not the house that was provided on the petition sketch was accurate. A new sketch was provided to the town of Southborough. And I think the question that was provided, the property in question, they showed, the part, the drawing shows pole six. And I was wondering if maybe the house number six was actually thinking P six meant their now number. But the pole's actually in front of pole, home ten. So, that was the minor change to the drawing. As far as questions about road safety and road concerns, I don't, I didn't really want to get into it at the meeting because I didn't have the proper information provided to me prior to the meeting, and I didn't feel comfortable answering. However, with conduit being laid, any conduit is laid by the builder that is requesting the work. So, they're supposed to request the road opening permits and bring any of that property that they change, make changes to, they're supposed to bring it back up to the way that they found it. So, as far as the concerns with any future problems with water or road damage, those really are not handled by us. We're just pulling wire and conduit that's laid by another party. So, that was something that was brought up, so I did just want to kind of meet on that. Also, I did speak with the builder, and as far as he was concerned, and he provided, showed me paperwork that said that this was all set to go, and there was question as whether or not this was an appeal. So, I don't know if that's true or not, but if it is, the paperwork that was shown to me pretty much flat out said that he was ready to go on his project. So, that's the information that National Grid was provided. So, again, National Grid is only proposing 25 feet of conduit to go through the public way. And that is to, it's not really conduit that's laid by us. It's actually underground primary that would be pulled through the conduit, laid by the builder. And National Grid would own and maintain those primary conductors that would run in the public way.
Thank you for doing that additional work. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have any.
Mr. Kalenda?
No, sir.
Mrs. Fenn?
Michelle.
Again, I wanted to thank you for reappearing this evening. One thing, I understand that National Grid has got no responsibility or obligation relative to the roadway. But I'd ask you just to make sure that the crews are aware that this is an area that has, in fact, in the past encountered some significant flooding downstream because it's on a slope. And to the extent that they can conduct their work with that in mind, in all due respect, I understand you have no responsibility, but at least make sure the crews are aware of this concern.
Well.
And to the extent that you see anything, or your crews see anything, that is inconsistent with putting that roadway back to the way it was beforehand, if you would at least alert the town to that, we'd appreciate that.
Of course. Absolutely.
Does anyone in public, the public here have anything to say relative to this application? Not seeing any response. Mr. Purple, is there a motion that is required?
The motion would be to accept the application from Massachusetts Electric Company, National Grid, to install an underground primary cable from P six Oregon Road across the roadway into the new development named Stony Brook Village as requested.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Vanessa, I'll be second. Telepath.
Yeah. So, we're going to depart from our previously scheduled appointments to have our town moderator address us for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Coombs, for coming. Appreciate it. Welcome.
Thank you very much for fitting me in. I received an email, and I think you did too, a couple nights ago or last night, from John Butler resigning from the advisory committee. And first of all, you know, I want to thank John publicly for all his service. He was on the committee for many, many years and did an invaluable service to the town and to the taxpayers of the town. But now, we have to move forward and fill the position. We're in the middle of the budget season, and I talked to the chairman of the committee today, and things are about to get very busy as they always do. So, it's an appointment that I think's important to make because that does give them someone to help share the workload and another input person. But by the same token, we have to move quickly on it. So, I appreciate you using this venue and your television audience, as well as anybody contacts you have, to pass the word that we're wide open. Anyone who wants to apply, I think they apply to Vanessa or send it in to Vanessa. But I would really appreciate people who are interested applying to that committee. It's a towns finance committee. It's an integral part of the budgetary process. But also, as part of that, with, you know, John and I have been in committees together off and on over the years. And, you know, it was kind of an eye-opening experience to me as well. Because one thing, as I look around town meeting in particular, but I look around many committees in town, you're not seeing the influx of younger, new residents come in that maybe happened years ago. Maybe it never happened, and maybe that's my memory from years ago being a little faded at this point. But it seems like the lack of new residents in town, the lack of people with children in town, the young children, the lack of just people who are starting out their careers and starting out as residents of Southborough, you know, hurts us because we lose input from that segment of the community. So, in particular, while I'm open to anyone, in particular, if there's anyone who maybe hasn't been involved in town government, or maybe has been, and wants to try their hand and contribute to the advisory committee, you know, please send your application in. I'd like to get them by the end of the week or early next week at the latest, so I can make a decision by the end of next week. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
And any input you guys have, if you know anybody who's interested, please have them.
Yeah. David, thank you for coming in, and you do raise a good point. And this board, I believe I speak on behalf of this entire board when I extend my sincere thanks and appreciation for Mr. Butler's over three decades' work on behalf of this town. For better or worse, and I'm sure many people would say for worse, Mr. Butler was one of the people that I met with at Lenth six years ago and was somewhat instrumental in my decision to get off the couch and sit as, and try to sit and represent the town as a selectman. Anyone who knows John and has worked with John, his intellect is unparalleled, his ability to analyze issues is both surgical and precise. I know you were going to try to fill those shoes, but I'll tell you right now, those shoes cannot be filled, at least not immediately. The wealth of experience and knowledge that he brought is something that this town and that board will be in, will miss tremendously. And I have tried to persuade him otherwise unsuccessfully. And again, on behalf of myself personally, but on behalf of this board overall, I just wanted to thank John for his service to this town. Because the end of the day, this town is a better place because of the efforts of John Butler. So, thank you for coming in, and thank you for making an effort to publicize this. Check your voicemail. I left you a voicemail earlier today as just potential candidates that maybe you should reach out to, to see if they're interested.
Right.
And how should people watching get in touch, David? Just call your office, call, you know, email Mark, Vanessa?
You know, whatever, any method. Call me, email me, everyone has my email.
It's easy enough if somebody wants to submit something to the selectmen's, selectmen's office email, and those can be passed. I can pass those through directly to you.
There's also a form online. If it's an active form, I've understand there's a couple of folks who have already submitted, at least a couple. So, hopefully that, does that go to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Other mark for myself, and we'll call it from a level directly to David.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you, and we'll see you all in April.
Thank you, David, sir.
Thanks.
I've got one follow-up question. How long of a period would you like to leave this open for you to make the decision as the appointing authority?
I can't hear, I'm sorry.
How long would you like this vacancy to be open before you act on a vacant apartment?
Well, you need to do it quickly because, you know, the committee's really involved in things. So, I would like to, I don't want to set a hard deadline, but I intend to make a decision by the end of next week. And so, if someone, if people can get their things, their applications in by the end of the weekend, would that work, Vanessa, where you can get them to Monday or Tuesday?
It might motivate people, too.
Yeah, thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
But just, you know, just hopefully we get some good applicants, and we can move forward in that committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Hagerty, Town Clerk, transfer station stickers. Something that I'm sure is near and dear to your heart.
It's about to be.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come here tonight. In the time I've been downstairs as the town clerk, we've looked at ways that we can improve our efficiency. We are putting a budget together that reduces staffing by 15 hours. And we've looked a number of increases, ways we can serve the town better and do things more efficiently. And one of the issues that came up, I thought, is we issue dog licenses, and we looked at the transfer station. We looked at how the stickers are issued down there, and that's really a very similar process to how dog licenses are issued. It's similar to how beach permits are issued in other towns, and in towns that issue dump stickers, they're issued by the clerks. So, when you think about it, it is a natural fit for us, and the busy time for the transfer station is in June and July, July and August, which is when we're slow. So, I sat down with Karen, talked to her about that, and asked if she would agree with us taking that over. And that's why we're here tonight. We've been through this. We've tried to turn it upside down. I spent a lot of time talking to people down the department, outside people, retired people, just to make sure I didn't have rocks in my head to take on something like this. And we think we can do it. There'll be no increase in staffing, no extra cost to the town just for us picking it up. And we have some ideas to do this, to substantially increase customer service to people. So, if you were to transfer this over to the clerk's office, people would be able to come in in person, they could do it by mail, they could do it online, we'll accept payments by credit card. And two of the big changes that I'd like to introduce if we get this, in sitting down with Karen and the folks in DPW, looking at the demographics of who buys transfer station stickers. One of the interesting wrinkles in what people have to provide, right now, you have to go in and, whether you're over 65 or under 65, you have to go in and show two forms of things to prove that you live in town. So, again, looking at the data we have downstairs, looking at other information, is part of our ongoing reviews to make ourselves more efficient, we realized that if we pull the data from the treasurer's office for excise tax, we already know the license plate of every person in town. If we pull the data we have from the clerk's office, we know the age of everybody in town. So, it doesn't take a lot of work to mash that together to get a list by license plate of everybody over 65. So, I already know if you're over 65 and you qualify for free license plate, why should I make you have to show me two forms of ID? We're already paying taxes. That works for me. So, one of the things we'd like to do, if you transferred to clerk's office, and I've talked to the senior center about this, is set up a means using a couple of kids that work for the rec department in the summer, hire them, you know, whatever their wage is for the afternoon, we figured it out, it's going to be about $1,000 bucks, and basically set up for the seniors to drive into this senior center in the afternoon, drive through, you don't have to get out of your car, we'll put the sticker around your car for you. It doesn't make a difference if your neighbor's driving the car, if I'm driving your car. Your car is registered to somebody over 65 in Southborough, that's all the proof we need. It would dramatically improve customer service. And quite honestly, why do I want a senior getting down on their knees, putting a sticker around the bumper? Why do I want to deal with that? All right? A couple of these young kids, we can bang that out in a heartbeat. The second thing we can do, which would dramatically improve stuff, is go back to kind of an old-school way we used to do things years ago. I remember there was a time when at the DPW, they would sell stickers on a Saturday at DPW. Well, the proposal would be, the first Saturday after the transfer station stickers take effect, we basically set up shop for the data on there with a police officer. And when you come in off the street, if you have a sticker, go right up the hill. If you don't, we'll direct you over to the parking lot where they do the car washes. And very simply, on the spot, we'll be able to issue a new sticker, cash, check, or credit card on the spot. We already know your license plate. If you live in Southborough, that's proof enough, I don't need anything else. If you have a car we don't know, we'll have a tablet, we can issue it, and issue it right on the spot. We think between those three things, we can really make this a much, much more easy way for people to issue it. That's pretty in a nutshell. So, the clerk's role would be simply to issue the transfer station stickers. Everything else related to the stickers, lack of a sticker, you know, other misuse of the transfer station, passing a sticker to somebody else, all those kind of things would continue to remain with DPW. We're just the vehicle to issue the sticker, just like we issue dog licenses, as simple as that. And that's, there's no hidden agenda here, there's no anything. I just think we can improve the customer service and make it more efficient for the town. And that's, in a nutshell, that's why I'm here.
Any questions? Yes, Mrs. Fenn?
First, thank you. I applaud you. You're doing what we, our expectations would be of any department head, but you're elected, which makes it even that much more special.
Thank you.
If Karen has, you see no issues with this at all, Karen, right? That we need to be aware of upfront? I mean, I don't. I think it's, all right.
Well, what about not upfront? You need to...
I mean, I personally don't see a downside to it, so I guess I would be interested.
He asked me to come up here to start with it. I just didn't want to say it like a dummy at first. No, I don't, I don't see any issues with it. What would, there's going to obviously be tweaks that, as we go through the process, that's, like, the first year is going to be tough on everybody just to try to get used to. People will still come down to us, people are going to forget certain things. But it actually, with the system that we're trying to put in place, it's going to be much easier on the residents. And being able to pay by credit card in person is going to be much better for a lot of people. We have a lot of people who ask for that, and we were going to implement that, but then when Jim asks, oh, you want us to do it, I thought, that's great, that's even better.
Because it sounds more efficient.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
We'll come back to you at another time to talk about pricing issues and some theories on that, as you normally, when you set the fees, and some options you have on that. But if you allow us to do this, we'll start working out the nitty-gritty behind the scenes with some options you have for that.
Do we need a vote on this?
Yeah, just one comment. If you take walk-ins, drive-ins on the first Saturday that you were describing, you're going to have a ton of people who don't bother with the usual process, they all just get one that first Saturday. You're going to have a line of cars all the way out to 85. That's just a prediction. Maybe rethink that. But either way, I'm going to support this.
Yeah, I guess...
You know, it's rhetorical.
We've gone back and forth on that, but we think that, we already have a lot of data for people, and we can make it easy for you to pay it online. There's some interesting options that we're going to throw out, that we can pay it online, we can verify stuff with your excise tax, we can make it easy for people. And this is only sort of to catch the people, they're not going to pop up until two or three months.
I understand, I hope I'm wrong.
Okay.
Mr. Purple?
If not, hey, we could use the help on that Saturday.
No, no, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, like I said, I just want to commend Mr. Hagerty. This is, you know, just an indication of some of the things that he's been doing to try and, you know, improve the, you know, the efficiencies over in that office, to try to modernize them. I made the comment this morning at the department head meeting, I think he's got about three years of low-hanging fruit, the things that he can address, and this is one of them. I think it's a great concept, you know, if Mrs. Gallagher is in favor of this, and, you know, it's going to improve, you know, the service, I think that's an excellent thing for the residents. The one thing I would caution, and that I think we need to look at and be careful about, is who is taking the money, and whether those positions are bonded. And we just need to figure that, those pieces out. You know, I'm a little concerned with, depending if people are taking money, you know, with the senior center, and how that's all being accounted for. That's my, that's my only, you know, twitchy issue that I think we need to resolve. Last thing I want is the auditor saying that we're not doing something right after we've been doing it. So, we'll get those questions answered ahead of time, but I just want to, you know, put that out there. But overall, I think it's, I think it's a great concept, and if Karen's on board, and it comes at the right time, for the town clerk's office to be able to, you know, to offer this, I think that it'll work out well.
I think I can answer that right now. The only people that ever touch cash would be employees of the clerk's office, myself or somebody else.
What should we do today?
Exactly. We would just use the kids as the runners to clean the bumper and put the sticker on and call it a day. With no, that's how we do it. In fact, frankly, at the senior center, it's a freebie anyway, so there'd be no money changing hands. So, that's it.
Okay. Cool.
Thank you.
Do you need, do you need anything from us to move forward, or no?
This is something I believe that we're going to see in, inside the town clerk's budget.
Okay.
And something, obviously, that we're not going to see in the DPW budget, so...
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
But it's, but, okay, Karen's telling me it's going to be split, but it's not, you know, in other words, we're not duplicating the expense and the buy, okay, that's...
No, the only piece that'd be picked up on our budget is the typical costs of the, the cost of the stickers themselves, the mailings, those kind of things. And there'll be a couple of, you know, whatever the cost, I think I thought it was on my head, but whatever the cost is going to be for the kids and the overtime for the people that Saturday, that Saturday. That's it.
Okay.
And the monies would continue to roll through the DPW, those funds that you have down there.
Okay.
Which would just be the facilitators, basically, that's all it plays out to be.
If you time it just right, you could put it in the senior bulletin that that's going to happen in September.
Yeah, and I plan to meet with the council on aging. They have a meeting this Friday. I'm not in there in general, but I'm going to the next one to talk about their plans on how we can get their involvement. It's the best location, best time of day to do it.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Next item, public comment. Not seeing any town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. This is kind of a busy time beginning in our office. The, between myself and Mrs. Hale, and Mrs. Coleri, and Ms. Ostrich, we are in the stretch of budgets and budget reports, and town meeting warrants, and town reports. And I have continuing negotiations with the communications officers on a first collective bargaining agreement. That is probably, I would say, we're about halfway through. Negotiations will begin this week with police on a new collective bargaining successor, collective bargaining agreement, and then fire in DPW. So, we'll have four of those going at the same time, along with all of the other issues. So, I wanted to just make you, make you aware of those things, but other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. In terms of the consent agenda, Mr. Semino?
Mr. Chairman, I vote that the Board of Selectmen approve Consent Agenda item one and items three through seven.
Is there a second?
There is, but, yeah, so, well, number three, of course, requires the discussion, right?
Yeah, I'm just moving it for...
Yep, I think that's great. I would second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, so, what, do we have, we want to set meeting schedules through April?
The meeting schedule, it was in your packet. Basically, it adheres to the first and third, first and third schedule that we have, that we have tried to maintain. I also added a meeting for the first and second nights of town meeting, April 11th and 12th. So, it just pretty much goes through the end of April, and there's nothing then beyond that. This is kind of historically what we've done. You know, we'll set it, you know, then we'll, we'll set it then from pretty much after town meeting, we'll set it from there to the, to the end of the year. And this is just your regular meeting schedule. If we have to add any extra meetings, we can do that.
Sounds good.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
With respect to the item left off...
I move for discussion, the Consent Agenda item number two.
Discuss?
I don't, but I just anticipated it.
Oh, okay. In terms of closing the 2016 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, I think procedurally, we're just voting to close it. I do not think, and I do not expect discussion on the individual articles on the warrant this evening in terms of whether the board supports or does not support just closing the warrant as presently constituted in front of us.
Correct.
So, okay, but as part of that, don't we need to discuss some of these as to whether or not we even want them on?
Well, we could. I mean, to the extent that you want to go through them, Mr. Kalenda?
Well, no, no, not one by one. I'm merely going to the end.
Well, let me ask you this. Mr. Purple provided us with a draft proposed town warrant, draft dated 1/4/16. And looking at them, are there certain articles that the board does not want to present to town meeting, as opposed to perhaps the board not supporting a town meeting? Because I believe there's a difference in that.
Can I?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Shay?
Can I ask one question? Article 11?
Yes.
Is proposed, reads, "Funding for E and D for PSF." I assume that's engineering and design for...
For public safety facility. Yes.
So, would that preclude, the way it's worded here, would that preclude?
It's a place, no, it's a placeholder.
So, construction itself could be added if this board were to desire to add the construction to the article?
Essentially, you have an article on there to address the public safety facility. How you choose to address that is up to you.
Okay.
If you'd like, I can just quickly move through these so you understand, okay. I mean, a lot of these are routine articles that you see every year.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't precluding, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, but...
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't precluded from...
You were not.
Including construction.
Yeah, I anticipate a future meeting where we go through each individual article and vote to either support or not support. But to the extent, Mr. Kalenda, you have an article or believe an article should not even appear on the warrant, why don't we discuss that?
So, if I can turn your attention then to Article 41, I'm curious as to why that one is there. We discussed transfer station, transfer station violations, fines, we set those every year. We established a process recently where our designee, Mr. Purple, would be able to hear those issues before they would ever come to us. So, I'm curious as to why this one is even there.
Well, if you, looking down, it's proposed bylaw change from the Green Technology and Recycling Committee with the support of the Public Works Planning Board. So, as I understand it, essentially, this is an article that is being submitted by them.
In that case, it's indicated incorrectly on the spreadsheet, it's coming from us. That may be what...
Yeah, I have present proposed by Board of Selectmen.
Right.
Mr. Purple?
Well, since the board does appoint the committee, um, I believe that it would come from you unless, you know, you want it to come from a committee that basically reports to you.
So, wouldn't, wouldn't this normally come before the Board of Selectmen at, you know, when Karen talks to us every year? Uh, really, I didn't, I don't see any reason for this to be, you know, bantered back and forth in a town meeting, especially proposed by us. We actually do this right here in a public meeting every year.
Yeah, I agree. Why would one of our committees have a town, uh, have a warrant article that we haven't even vetted yet?
I agree with Mr. Semino.
This was, this was something that was submitted, you know, that was, that was passed on through an email, I think several months ago, for the board's consideration. You've had no discussion about it at all to this point. And in order to ensure that you at least had an opportunity either to decide whether you want it on or want it off, that's why it's being included.
Yeah, so I, I, my point remains, I guess, we, we've, this is a, a pretty lengthy discussion every year in an open meeting with public input, with, uh, input from other boards and committees and which I find very helpful. And, uh, again, I, I, I continue to think that's the right, um, venue for, for this, not a, um, something at annual town meeting.
I agree.
Question?
Yes, Mrs. Faniff.
Number 26, is that gonna be sponsored by the police chief?
Yes, that's something that's been, that had been, um, brought forward by the police chief.
So he'll be the sponsor of it? Or we sponsor it and he will facilitate it?
No, we would. Right, the board, the board would be the sponsor.
I understand that, but he will present it?
He can speak to it, yes.
There's no enforcement, um, that the police department can lean on for noise violations, so that's, it was a discussion with residents and that's why it's coming up.
This is something that most communities do have, and the biggest piece of it is that it usually sets start times and stop times for construction and, and things of that nature, which controls that. And there's been some issues that have been raised, um, during some issues that I've dealt with this past year. And, and Mrs. Faniff has brought some to my attention about the fact that there is no noise by law. And it's, it's not so much the stopping time, it's the starting time. It's usually a seven to seven. And, you know, sometimes the engines get going at 6:30 and, you know, because the builders wanna get going, they wanna get done, they're on timelines. And, um, I believe, uh, you know, Mr. Semino had, had asked a question of me as to what this may affect. And, and currently, I don't see that it affects any, it's more of a perspective issue because the issues that would have generated this discussion have now gone past. Right, okay, so this is a looking forward issue.
I, yeah, and I asked the question earlier today because I don't wanna go looking for issues, right? I'm not saying I, I don't support this, but there isn't, is there, there isn't a current, there isn't a current activity in town that this would affect. So we just have to decide whether we wanna.
Right, no, this is, this is, you know, an issue that, you know,
Prophylactic.
you know, well, to be, you know, to be blunt, I mean, you know, I spent a lot of time, um, with, uh, with Clifford Street. Um, and it appears that that issue is finally coming to a, um, to a, to a close. But this was an issue and, and the residents were asking, you know, for something like this to be done. And so that's, you know, that was just one instance of why this is being brought forward.
Okay.
And I'm aware of residents, uh, calling the police department for assistance and they don't, they do not have a tool for other reasons to enforce something.
Okay. Sounds good. So I guess.
Yeah, before we move on, I wanna go back to Article 41 because I think we need to make a decision on whether or not that article is included in this warrant or not. I've heard from two selectmen in terms of their, um, position that it should not be. Mrs. Faniff?
I think it's being appropriately handled here. I don't know. Would we have to change the violation process every time at town meeting if there's any changes? I would assume so.
The way, yeah, the way, the way that this reads is instead of it being a set fine for a vi, for a, for a violation, the board then sets the violation, uh, sets the fees by violation type every year as part of your process. You need to determine what the fines are for each particular type of violation, whether somebody is coming in without a permit, whether somebody is disposing of, you know, trash that is not authorized, whether somebody is, you know, doing certain things. The other issue is that, um, this board had designated me to handle a lot of the administrative pieces. And then when it came to the appeals, this board had wanted me to handle the appeals with, uh, with a selectman sitting in on the appeal. And that was not one set person, it was, it was, um, who was available, um, for a particular, uh, matter. And this changes that so that basically the board has all of the responsibility, administrative or otherwise, for this. And, and your designee does not.
I don't think that's necessary.
Well, Mrs. Shay?
I'll disagree. I think we ought to include it in the warrant. I know that this was, this came about from work that the Public Works Planning Board had done in reviewing the transfer station. These are recommendations that they had made, and I remember them coming before this board in making, stating or summarizing those recommendations. Uh, if, if it's more appropriate to list them as the sponsor, either the Green Technology and Recycling Committee or the Public Works Planning Board as the sponsor, I mean, we certainly have the right to oppose this at town meeting and before that and take a position against it. But, um, out of respect for those two committees, I think we at least ought to continue with it on the warrant as it's written now.
I think if you were to change the sponsor, it should be the Green Technology and Recycling Committee because they were the ones that came forward with it.
So.
If you were to do that.
Yeah.
That's, that's mine.
That's reasonable.
I think I, I agree with Mr. Shay. I, I don't agree with these changes. I, I don't think legally you can just put down, shall be subject to a fine and not identify the fined amount. And then leave it up to the individual instance to set whatever fine you want so that someone could be fined a hundred dollars for one particular type of offense. And then that same offense, another person could be fined $2,000. I don't think you can do that. So I do think legally you cannot take out the enumerated amount of the fine in Section 36-8. I don't know why commercial use is completely deleted from 36-6. I don't want to be, uh, occupying this board's time with each individual violation. I prefer to, um, designate someone on this board's behalf to deal with those issues. So I have an issue with 36-9. I think 36-8 is, cannot be done legally. There's no change in 36-7. I don't agree with 36-6. So I think as written, I, I would not support it, but I agree with Mr. Shay that, um, to the extent that the Green Technology and Recycling Committee or the Public Works Planning Board wants to make these arguments at town meeting, they can do so. Well, we should allow them to do so, but I can at least give them a preview of my position relative to these changes. So let me call for a vote. All those in favor of keeping, uh, Article 41 within the draft town warrant? Shay aye.
Well, well.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan, because I'm gonna clarify too.
No, no, so, so, um, well, I'm gonna say, right, uh, my position remains just as yours, I believe, um, Mr. Rooney, and I think I heard Mr. Semino. It, um, it clearly doesn't belong with us. So, uh, I don't know that you can, that we can actually, um, change it to have it, um, come from a different committee. They're gonna have to do that on their own. Uh, I think the only thing we could do right now, and maybe that's where you're going with this, is not have it appear as written coming from us.
You would change the sp, you would just change the sponsor.
Can we change the sponsor ourselves?
It was submitted to the board, like I said, this was sent to you in an email that, that was being proposed from the Green, Green Technology Committee.
Well, was it ever an agenda item, Mark, that we discussed?
No, it was not.
Okay, so that, that may be nobody's fault.
Right.
But here it is now, an article on the warrant. I, I just think that, I, I don't like that process at all.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, and I, and I, I'm with Mr. Rooney. I don't, I don't, I'm not in support of the substantive changes either, but if it's gonna be on, look, we could take this out tonight and reopen it and put it back in later, uh, sponsored by somebody else. A, a group of 10 citizens could put it in if they want to. I mean, I, there's a lot of ways it can come up, so I'm not opposed to it going to town meeting. But I, I do, I don't wanna set, um, shoddy precedent, and that's not, that's not aimed at you, that's just as much aimed at me, frankly, as to how these things happen. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but I think if we close the warrant, correct me if I'm wrong, then it then prohibits anyone from submitting any type of further citizens petition, et cetera, except upon the, uh, uh, discretion of this board to reopen the warrant.
That's correct.
Right, and I, and I'm saying I would be in favor of reopening it if we did it, if, if this came to us, either, either through us or separately, but by another body that is identified that isn't us. So I'm not opposed to this eventually making it to town meeting, that's not my point. I think town meeting should vote on as many things as we, as, as they can. I just, I don't, I don't wanna set the wrong precedent for how this has been done so far.
I, I agree with a lo, a lot of that. I just, I'm still concerned as to why this is even coming, uh, would, would this group be setting a precedent at town meeting where all of this is hashed back and forth every, every town meeting? I think that's what it's, maybe they can. Maybe there's, there's, this board can only say, no, we don't agree with it and, and drive on. But, uh, even putting it forward, to me, doesn't make sense. We do this every year, right here.
Well, there's a way to avoid these transfer station discussions every year.
Well, we could go, we could, we could go pay as you go.
We could, we could, we could avoid these, uh, once and for all, but I'm not sure this board is ready to have that discussion.
Pay as you go, I am.
That said, um.
If the board would like to close the warrant without it and place it on as an agenda item for further discussion, invite the Green Technology Committee in to make their pitch. And then if the board wants, they can open up the warrant to conclude it back on. Just be cognizant of the fact that if you open up the warrant again and there's something else waiting, you may be adding more than just one article.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we, uh, why don't we take that, uh, suggested course of action, but put it on a very tight timeline and do it on January 19th? So that we'll be able to close the warrant with some degree of finality sooner rather than later.
I agree with that.
So we'll have it as an agenda item on the 19th, a discussion on proposed article to change the transfer station violation and fines. And, uh, we can then have a substantive discussion then, and to the extent the board, uh, I'm not sure we're gonna come out with a different, uh, result in terms of its inclusion or non-inclusion, but we can at least vet the process, which, Mr. Semino, is one of your concerns.
Why don't we adopt what Mr. Shay is suggesting, that it be proposed by the Green Technology and Recycling Committee? And leave it at that and print it and still close the warrant? And have this debate after we are a hundred percent clear on the fact that some of these efforts cannot be achieved because of legal language or whatever and we're I would really like to close the warrant.
Do we appoint Green Technology and Recycling?
Yes.
Is Mr. Rooney?
And it, it sounds like there's not a, a lot, if any, support for these changes proposed by a group that we appoint then. So why, why would we, why would we allow it to go forward? I mean, if they're really acting on our behalf, regardless of who is, the article is coming from, if they are.
Well, I'm, I'm struggling with that too, Dan, but I, I actually tend to agree that it should come forward. We appoint them, but they are, they're a permanent standing committee, correct? I mean, it's not an ad hoc committee that we, that we formed to, to, to address a specific issue. I mean, they are. Yes, are we looking at, Vanessa?
Because it started as, they were the old recycling committee. I think they could be, we'll check, I think they could be an ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
Well, regardless, I do think we should give them an opportunity to present their position to us. And again, going back to Mr. Semino's comment, perhaps we should have had this discussion prior to this evening in the closing of the warrant, but be that as it may, we didn't.
Would we not have this exact same discussion in an open meeting annually with the head of the DPW, like we do every year?
No, because this is, this is a bylaw, and so this is not something that would be part and parcel of the discussion of the rules and regulations.
But isn't part of the rules and the regulations, don't we discuss commercial use, don't we discuss, um, you know, we set who our designee was for fines? And like, I mean, I thought I recall that.
Well, I, so I, I think the discussion would be within the four corners of, of, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna go that route. But I mean, it's not that you're changing any of the things that are already in the bylaw. I mean, obviously, that's something that only town meeting can do, so you're operating within those, within those four corners with regard to the rules and regulations. So, my suggestion, and again, you know, if, if, you know, I have no problem, you know, to Mr. Semino's point, taking some of the blame of this. If in fact, there is any that should fall my way, um, you know, like I said, there was an email that was sent, um, forward from Green Technology, which was circulated to the board, um, several months ago. I did not want there to be the potential that this article slipped through the cracks. Uh, we have not had the opportunity to discuss it, so I wanted to at least have it on the, um, have it on the draft warrant. My suggestion, given the discussion this evening, is that the board should close the warrant as is. And we can put this item on the agenda for discussion at the, at the January 19th meeting. And then the board can make the decision as to how they want to address it, you know, at that time, and we can reopen the warrant and, and either leave it on, take it off. But I, I agree with Mrs. Faniff that I think the warrant should be closed tonight.
Yeah, I agree. I completely agree with Mrs. Faniff on that. To that end though, if we're going to do that, if this is something that, you know, we haven't, we haven't had that discussion, shouldn't it minimally, shouldn't the warrant be closed with the, at least as Mr. Shay has stated, you know, the, the proposer being the Green Technology Committee instead of us? And how do we close it saying, you know, it's us and, and we're not having any agreement right now of its content, so.
I agree, you know, I agree with that. You could change, you could change the sponsor to the Green Technology Recycling Committee.
Yeah, I, I would, I would still like to have a discussion on the 19th because, um, maybe to the extent that there's zero support on this board for this, these changes, then I think that the sponsoring committee would like to know that before going to town meeting.
That's fine. Why don't we close it as is and then have that discussion? We can always reopen and withdraw it or, or table it or, yeah.
Does that make sense?
I think so.
So is there a motion?
Motion to, uh, close the, uh, town me, do it right here. Move that we close the 2016 Annual Town Meeting Warrant as printed in front of us.
Is there a second?
Well, with the exception that the sponsor for Article 41 be changed to the Green Technology and Recycling Committee?
Yes.
So, uh, so amended, so moved.
Second.
Is there's any further discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll put that on the 1/19 agenda.
Okay. Is that?
That's it, yes.
Okay, other matters? There are no other matters. At this point, the board is entering into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30, Law J, Section 21, and not returning to open session. The issue to be discussed is to consider the purchase of rail property under Exemption 6 as the chair has determined that having discussion in open session may be detrimental to the public body's negotiating position. This, uh, this requires a roll call vote. Rooney aye.
Semino aye.
Kalenda aye.
Faniff aye.
Shay aye.
We are now in executive session. Thank you for coming. Those that have been invited to executive session, you may obviously stay. Those that have been invited to executive session, you may obviously stay.